Seeing that it's 7 o'clock, we'll open the meeting of today's date?
The 3rd.
The 3rd, June 3rd, 2019. Okay, present for the hearing will be Kasaya Mizrahi, Peter Parcellin, Jerry Joy, and Dan Wasari, and myself, Robert Gahan. Okay, let's see, we did the, we had some bills, we had a couple of advertisements. They've all said they've been reviewed and whatnot. Okay, we're all good with that. We'll do some quick mail, seeing our first hearings in a couple minutes. Conservation Appeals from Selectmen's Assistant. There was a petition submitted by a Carleen, I'm gonna butcher this poor lady's name, Fiamaria? Fiamara? Is that close, Alana?
I think so.
And she put in for conservation for the zoning board of appeals. I haven't heard any more information other than that she submitted a request. Those are done.
They're signed?
Yeah. Memo to the ZBA from Pino Laducci, Treasurer Collector. 2019 recycling fee for the above-mentioned property was paid on 5/7/19. All taxes and fees were paid up to date. That was for the 99 Hudson Street from our last minute, so they're all good with that. We have a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Office of the Attorney General, one Ash Burton Place, regarding the open meeting law complaint. It's addressed to Mr. Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street in Halifax. Dear Mr. Andrews, We understand that on April 2nd, 2019, you filed a complaint with the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals. The board alleging a violation of the Open Meeting Law, General Law 30A, Section 18 to -25. The board is required to notify our office of the complaint in any remedial action taken to address the complaint. The General Law 30A, Section 23B, 940 CMAS, 2905, Section 5. Our office received notification and response from the board on April 17th, 2019. Under the open meeting law, our office may only review your complaint after 30 days have passed from the time you first filed your complaint with the board. General Law 30A, 23B, 940 CMAS, 2905, 6. After 30 days, you may file a request with our office for further review of your complaint. 30 days have now passed since you first filed your complaint with the board. You may file your complaint for further review with our office up until 90 days have passed since the alleged violation date. Accordingly, we will presume that the action taken by the board was sufficient and will close this file unless we receive a request for further review and a copy of the initial complaint by June 10th, 2019. Please feel free to contact us if you have any questions about the open meeting law complaint process. Sincerely, Mira Netski, Paralegal Division of Open Government. Zoning Board of Appeals from the Planning Board regarding 40B Plymouth Street. That's all it says, that's the subject. The Planning Board would like to request that if and when the zoning board receives "the 40B", that they be invited to attend any and all meetings regarding a public hearing. Possible joint meetings would be beneficial to both committees, thank you. Of course, all our meetings are a matter of public meetings, so if and when we do, we'll send them off a letter specifically inviting them to whatever matters they select. Also, to the boards, committees, and departments from Selectmen's Assistant. May 29th, reorganization of the board's selectmen at its meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th. The Halifax Board of Selectmen recognized as follows: The Chairman Troy Yarren, Vice-Chairman Tom Millius, and the Clerk Gordon C. Andrews. If you have any questions, please contact our office, thank you. Also, the Town of Halifax Board of Selectmen knows of a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019, at 8:45 PM in the Selectmen Meeting Room 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, to consider an application by the town for a long-term trailer permit for office use on the property located at 464 Plymouth Street. For the Selectmen. Troy Yarren, Tom Millius, and Gordon Andrews. 464 Plymouth Street, which one's that?
The elementary school.
Oh.
For the fire suppression system, they have to have a trailer for the principal and the assistant principal and the secretary to stay in.
Okay. Didn't recognize. On a lot and meet the requirements of parking or meet the requirements of...
Three other bylaws.
Of the bylaws.
Well, of those other bylaws, if the board feels strongly about individual variance requests, you know, I think, as we testified at the last meeting, if we need to, we can increase the size of the loading space, if we have to.
Increase the size of the what?
The loading space.
That's the address, awesome. So that's all on there. Okay, seeing that it's 7 minutes after, let's get on to our first hearing notice. 7:05, Petition, 8:95. Tammy St. Andre, 99 Hudson Street, a special permit for an in-law apartment, continuance. Permit 8:95, 8:95. Hi, Tammy, how are you? The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 6th, 219, at 7:05 in Meeting Room Number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Tammy St. Andre to renew a special permit for an in-law apartment located at 99 Hudson Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Tammy St. Andre and Ryan and Daniel Johnson of 99 Hudson Street, Halifax, Mass, 02338, as shown on Assessors' Map 14, Lot 7B, Title Reference Book 44608, Page 128. The applicant seeks a special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under 167-7D12, Schedule of Use Regulations, Area of Zone Residential, Petition Number 895. Hi, Tammy, how are you? Okay, we got the notice, everything is all squared away over there.
Yeah, they were sending it two addresses ago. Every other bill goes to 99 Hudson, they were sending it to my daughter Ruth in Holbrook before she moved to Whitman and then in Halifax, so it wasn't going to her address.
Okay, there you go. So everything is good.
Yeah.
According to your application, we went through before, it didn't require approval from the Board of Health or the Planning Board. There were no substantial changes that have been made to the property at all. No petitions, no, nothing to do with utilities, anything like that. Same residents?
Same residents, same people.
Blood relative, immediate family relative?
Yes.
Any questions from any of the members of the boards?
No, I just wanna make sure, because we talked about before, that it has down there that it will be for review and that it doesn't expire, because this is why we had to go through all of this this time, because they changed the laws in the town. It was supposed to be just, you know, you not have to do all the hit work that we did and that now it will be a permanent in-law. I mean, I know you have to come back in five years, but the zoning board said to make sure that it states that it is now...
A review.
It's a, and it's also a review, but it's also a permanent in-law, so like, if they ever sold it or anything, it wouldn't be an issue. Because I guess they passed the laws last June.
It is an in-law, yeah.
Yes, but the way it was when we purchased it, it was an in-law, but it was no longer an in-law the way the town bylaws were. So we had to petition five years ago with you guys to be able to keep it as an in-law. So like, when you go sell the property, I was told now the new laws are that it can be sold as an in-law, not that we're going anywhere but in the future, something that came up, that you can sell it as an in-law, because I guess before it was considered not legal to send, do it as that even though it was in paperwork for the town that it was an in-law.
Right.
So it was with you and now it's with the property.
When we purchased it, it had been an in-law, but they take that away, is what it used to be. But now, they had passed a law last year, so that now the property will be listed as an in-law permanently. I mean, you'll have to renew this thing, but you would have it as an in-law.
What advice is gonna buy it with an in-law?
Right, that they have the, they can purchase it that way.
That's specifically stated that way, so it doesn't become a duplex, it doesn't become an income-producing apartment? It's specifically worded that way. Any other questions or anything, members of the board? I'll accept a motion regarding Petition Number 895.
Motion to accept Petition 895 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motioned in second. I'll call for a voice vote. Kasaya?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passes 5, 0 to 0. Alana, you can run her through all the paperwork and all the things that she needs. It has to be stamped downstairs, and Alana will go through all of that with you.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. All right, number 2. 7:10, we're good. 7:10, Petition Number 897. Victor Ricciotti?
No, it's not me.
No, it's us.
Okay, go on in. 89 Colby Drive, Special Permit for an In-Law Apartment. Petition Number 897. Is that everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 7:10 in Meeting Room Number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Victor C. Ricciotti?
Victor K. Ricciotti.
Ricciotti.
It's close.
For a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at 89 Colby Drive in Halifax, Mass.
88.
88. Said property is owned by Victor K. Ricciotti of 88 Colby Drive, Halifax, Mass, 02338, as shown on Assessors' Map 22, Lot 2, Title Reference Book 12552, Page 4. The applicant seeks a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under Section 167-7D12, Area of Zone Residential, Petition Number 897. Okay, you've had the permit in place?
Yeah, we've been there for 12 years now.
Yep, and who's renting?
Nobody's renting, my mom and dad live with us.
Okay. And as with the form that you have filled out, anything changed? Any changes to the property? New entrances, additions?
No.
Petitions? Okay. Questions for members of the board? Works from there. Okay, nothing changed or anything like that? Again, the permits reviewed every year, every five years, so it'll be the same form. I'll ask you if there are any changes or whatnot, but I'll accept a motion regarding Petition Number 897.
I'll make a motion to accept Petition Number 897.
And a second?
Second.
There's been a motion in second to accept the petition for the pre-existing in-law apartment located at 88 Colby Drive. Kasaya?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passes 5, 0 to 0. And again, Alana will give you the process, what you have to do to make sure that everything is all registered and set.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
And that didn't even hurt. Mr. Maker?
No, I'm getting it.
Well, he's definitely wanted it, he's gonna be excited.
Third time he's out, right?
Sorry.
That one.
Who are we looking for?
Robert Maker.
Robert Maker?
The Robert Maker?
Might be in the kitchen, Dan. When do we do that?
Two minutes till you do it.
Well, yeah, we really can't go our schedule for that. We really should go. Let's do the minutes, probably, we have some time. These are for the minutes of Monday, May 6th, 2019. I read them all quick. I didn't find anything, sort of shadowy. Changes, anybody have changes, deletions, corrections? Alana is a little old, so she's gonna slip a little, so we may have to turn it carefully.
Zing!
Did I mention 40? Have I mentioned 40?
Like, 4 is 0?
She's got heat, heat.
Well, according to Dan, I'm 25.
There you go.
That's true.
That's right.
What did you do?
There you go. This pen's been doing me trouble.
Sir, I could call Mr. Maker, he's on his way up.
Oh, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of May 6th, 2019, as presented?
Motion to accept the minutes of Monday, May 6th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned in second to accept the minutes of May 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5, 0 to 0.
We have a second?
Shocking, the cobble blister. It's shocking, I am shocked.
I didn't say this one either.
We thought they were actually...
No.
They're actually...
At least I got that. Yeah, that's right. Towards the door, yes.
Well, seeing it's 7:20. We can go back to Mr. Maker, so we don't hold up Mr. Roy.
That's all right.
Petition 899, Roy Murphy. 7 First Ave, Special Permit and Variance for Renovation. 898. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 7:15 PM in Meeting Room Number 1 of the Town Hall. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 7:20 PM in Meeting Room Number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Roy E. Murphy for a special permit and variance for interior and exterior renovations to an existing home located at 7 First Ave, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Roy E. Murphy of 7 First Street, Halifax, Mass, as shown on Assessors' Map 52, Lot 62, Title Reference Book 50854, Page 46. The applicant is seeking a special permit to renovate the interior and exterior existing home, adding a farmer's porch and a second floor, which would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use and alteration exceeding 50% of the real market valuation of the structure and an extension of a non-conforming use. The applicant is also seeking a variance from the front line, front lot line on First Ave from 50 feet to 44 feet. This is in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under Sections 167, 8A, B, and C. Area of Zone Residential, Petition 899. Hi.
Hi, how are you, sir?
Great. Wanna give us an idea of what you're doing?
Well, I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna center the front of, I don't know if you're familiar with the property. The door's all the way over to the left. I'm gonna center the door, take off the roof, put a second floor on, and then wrap the front with a farmer's porch.
Now, this is one street old from the new house that's being built on Lincoln?
I'm not sure, yes, on the corner, that's pat. I just, when I pull down there, I pull down First Street. I don't pull down any longer.
You're the very first one, okay. And is there a pre-existing farmer's porch on there?
No, no, there is not.
So is that what the variance is for?
Yeah, yes, I believe so.
Basically, it's a six-foot farmer's porch?
Yes. Well, what will happen in the, if you have the front, the front view of it, keeping seven feet of existing grade on the cape roof and then tying that into the front. When you look from the front, it will actually look like a three-sided porch, because it ties into the sides. So it's kind of detrimental to what I was hoping to do with the property. So... And we're reading in the prerequisites too. When you look at my site survey, my backyard is literally four feet wide. So the way that the house is presented on the property, imagine from one end zone to the other. My house is tucked away on a 50-yard line, so it looks like I have a lot of land, like it's a big parcel. But literally, my backyard, if I went like this, this hand would be in my neighbor's pocket. So I literally have no way to do anything to the rear of my house at all.
Do we have this like planned in here? It's not only mine. Do you have both?
Yes, I have one.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh, I see what you mean, okay, we have it here.
Yes.
Thank you. And so this would be Lincoln Street here? You're on the corner? Or you're, no, you're not?
No, I'm not even on the corner. I have the corner to, I think, I'm, what is the street? Fayette Street?
Fayette Street and the bath, on the side set back.
And that would be on the water side.
So was the deck pre-existing?
There is a, no, there, well, there's a deck, there's a deck for the first-floor egress on the very left-hand side of the property now.
So this is what it has, this is what it must have been.
Existing deck, this is the center of the house.
You're gonna center that door for that?
Yes, I'm gonna center the door, center the windows, tie the farmer's porch into the existing on the water side.
But this deck is here now.
Yeah.
And that deck that's on the water side, on the Fayette Street side, you're not expanding that?
No, not at all, I'm gonna have to redo it. They didn't, nothing, nothing's right. The stringers, the stringers are on patio pads. There's all, all the stringers are on patio pads. So as they come down the stairs, they're all shifting. I'm ready to, I'm a union waterproofer, so I know, I moved back to where my parents in Whitman, so I'm all in on this thing. So I'm just hoping it goes, it goes okay.
So the only increase in the footprint is the front farmer's porch?
Yes, yes, existing, another thing too is on the Title V, the Title V passed for three bedrooms. I'm gonna be there by myself. So it's gonna be, I hope when I'm done, it's gonna be, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath. The two bedrooms, neither one of them has closets. Neither one of them had a door. I demoed, I got my, my permit, exploratory permit, to do the demo. When I redo all the windows, I'm gonna, I'm gonna basically end up reframing the entire house, so...
And you're adding a second floor?
Yes. And I had a structural engineer come in, and I have the structural engineer at Cave called Lumber, he said that all the math's fine. When it comes down to getting all the structural stamped, they're finally doing that as well.
What, I'll think it's the lot?
13,000, it's a third of an acre. 14,399 feet, .33 of an acre. It's right on the, it's a nice lot, but the reason why it's a nice lot is because the house is so tucked off to the side.
Does it have a foundation?
Yes, eight-inch block, yes.
So you're not gonna change the foundation?
Nope, not at all.
So you're just gonna go lot?
Yep.
So a basement in it?
Yes.
Full or a cross?
Well, it's classified as a crawl space because you can't stand up in it, it's about five feet. There's 15 lally columns in the 24-by-48. There's three rows of five lally columns. And I still have to, the way that they distributed the weight, it's wrong. I still have to reinforce the main beam with two bigger LVLs. The LVLs now aren't rated for going, they're fine. If I kept it this way, it'd be fine, but they're not rated for any more weight. So I have to, in the middle beam, I have to shift over four lally columns to support, to distribute the weight properly.
All right, and the variance for waiving the renovation percentage, what is the percentage, the new percentage?
I'm not, I, this is my first house, I'm not sure how much is... I bought the house for $220,000, so I'm putting every dime I have into it.
Well, because he's putting on a second floor, that's 50%. Is the porch considered? Is this non-living?
Non-living space.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's 900, as now, it's 950 square feet. When I'm done, it will be a little over 1,500 square feet.
So that's not 50%? That's not 50%?
Yeah, but the renovations, it's probably 50.
But I think with the renovations, I'm hoping it's gonna be worth more, because it's...
They're talking about dollar value, or are they talking about...
Yes, yes.
How close, how close is the house behind? I know you only have four foot.
No, comparatively to where my neighbor's house that's on this side of land is right here.
Is that what's the angle that you're...
Real kiefs.
Well, is it one-story or two-story?
There's a two-story.
4.7 feet to the lot line?
Yes.
That's what it is now?
That's what it is, yeah.
That's where it's not. It's gonna stay that way.
It's gonna stay that way, sir.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board? Is, are members of the board, are they familiar with the area? Or would you like to arrange to have a site inspection?
I'm familiar with the areas.
I'm familiar with the area also. I'll entertain a motion then, to waive the onsite.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in second to waive the onsite inspection regarding Petition Number 899. Kasaya? Peter? Myself, yes, Jerry?
Yes.
And then, so that passes, that basically just saves you 30 days.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you very much.
That passes, the onsite passes 5, 0 to 0. Okay, how do the members feel about Petition Number 899? Any contingencies, any restrictions, anything added to?
While we go around. Bud is notified, any...
Well, they had you up there for the meeting. Have you had any conversation with any of the...
I've had a conversation with all my neighbors, they're all fine.
So everybody's been notified, they have their chance to be here.
Debbie Harding, which had a rough go at it, right next door, is a very nice lady. And if anything, she's gonna be the one that's, and she's nice.
Right, it's gonna enhance the...
What's it?
It's gonna be a better-looking building.
Yeah, right. He's not increasing anything, he's mainly increasing the variance.
Well, I think as far as the variance goes, I do think it would not be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood, it would only enhance it. The other houses, the, and there, there is a hardship, I think, he's limited due to the topography and size of the lot. And I personally don't think it's, it derogates from the intent of the bylaw. Anybody else feel different on the...
There's gonna be a two-bedroom, what, two-games?
It's gonna be a three, it's gonna be a three-bedroom, two-bath. So one bedroom downstairs, two-bedroom, with a master suite upstairs.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding Petition 899?
I'll make a motion to accept Petition Number 899 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to accept Petition 899. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept petition eight-nine-nine as presented. Call for voice vote. Kasai? Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jerry? And Dan. Pasts five-zero-zero.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, you'll have to, I'll, I'll talk you through, let you know how.
Whatever, whatever, whatever's fine, if I may, thank you very much.
Okay, you'll have to get a, the results has to be registered down with the town clerk. Then you have to go to registry of deeds with the name and, and the line, go through all that with the, the appeal period and whatnot.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have a.
I just read, I just read, yes?
All right. Mr. Maker?
Yes.
How are you?
How are you?
You're late. Does that mean one of us has to phone home?
I'll stick my mom on there. Brian.
Mr. Andy saved me.
I could've called your mom. But now you're a caller.
Okay, the, seeing that it's approximately seven-fifteen, the Halifax zoning board of the fields. Because you were wrong for seven-fifteen. The Halifax zoning board of the fields will hold a public hearing on Monday, June third, two thousand nineteen, at seven-fifteen PM, in meeting room number one of the town hall, four-ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Robert Maker for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at twenty-seven Cherry Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Robert Maker of twenty-seven Cherry Street, Halifax, Mass., oh-two-three-three-eight. Is shown on the assessors map, eighty-seven lot two C, title reference book one-four-seven-two-zero, page eleven. The applicant seeks a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one-sixty-seven, seven-D twelve. Area is zone residential, petition number eight-ninety-eight. Mr. Maker, would you like to address your petition, who, who you have moving in there?
Nobody moving in, my mom's been living there for the last ten years, so. Everything's just the same, there's no change.
No changes, no additions, no.
No movement.
No. I'm hoping she'll move. Listen, if I can get her to move, that's my thing, but right now, I'm pretty sure I'm stuck with her, right? No, no change at all.
This is recorded, you know.
I know, yeah, don't say, let us see it. Everything is. No change, no nothing. I wish I could charge her rent, that's about it, right?
Never happens.
Totally tagging your mom on Facebook.
She set me up for this. She was supposed to remind me when all this was going on.
Surprise.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so nothing changes, no additions, no deletions. How does the members of the board feel regarding petition number eight-ninety-eight? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept eight-ninety-eight as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to accept petition eight-ninety-eight. I'll call for voice vote. Kasai? Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Jerry?
Yes.
And Dan. So it's a five-year renewal, review, review, so. Shoot, walk you through.
Is it like every five years?
It's the same thing, the form would be sent in, nothing's changed, same person, that type of thing, just so.
It's a review now?
It's a review.
It's not a review, it's a review now.
Great, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All set? All right, thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right. Hey, how you doing? Come on in. Seven-thirty-five.
Yeah, look at that, we're flying.
Seven-thirty-five, petition eight-eight-six, Maotao and Hem Fang, three-ninety-five Plymouth Street, special permit. Close the, closed hearing. How are you? Good. Awesome. All right, where are we? Has anybody had time to review the opinion from the town council? She wrote this on this, we said we seen it, here it is. Term you still won't all. We're voting on this tonight, gentlemen. Okay, so where are we in regards to the addition? That was the main concern, I don't know if, it was my thought after reading the review on it, that the town council's main concern was the fact that that addition that was what, eighteen inches, a foot and a half, or slightly on adjacent property, was a main concern, only because we'd be given a variance on, to a piece of property that's, that doesn't, owned or, or is concerned with the applicant. Well, what has been done, at our last meeting, that addition, that portion of the house was gonna be raised.
So, you know, about several weeks ago, you know, we, he tried to negotiate with the owners, the owner of the, of the property, and he's coming, he's willing to, to sell the, the, the piece of block, you know, attached to them. And, but, you know, this owner go to, go to the town, but, you know, he's, he's in the, you know, cannot get a permit. So, so, so in the, in the future, need to be tear that, tear down at this point.
Right. Okay, so, so as far as buying the, the portion of, of a piece of that property, that's not an option at this point. So that portion or that addition, I don't have the exact dimensions of it, but that portion of the house is coming down.
First, first the owner is willing to, to sell it.
Right, but that's not gonna happen. All right, so when is that gonna happen? When can that be done?
Yeah, so, you know, the inspector need to decide up the permit to be tear down.
Have you talked to him about that?
Yeah. But he didn't sign up, yeah. Yeah, but the, the owner is, is willing to, to speak with the, the inspector again, you know, to, to go, to.
To allow, to. That was the second, because basically, that portion of the house is on somebody else's property, so he'd need, he'd need.
Permission from.
Right, he need permission, I can't think of the gentleman's name, he runs, I can see his face, but I can't think of his name. But basically, in order for Rob to sign off on a, on, to raise that, he needs the property owner's permission, so.
How much time do they have left? This is it?
I think this is it. Yep.
There's no time left.
Correct, that's how I understand it. So the only way, and, and that I feel anyway, that, that this could go through is if, if it was a contingent upon the raising of that portion. So in other words, if, if he can't raise, or if he doesn't get permission from, from the adjacent homeowner or property owner, then the permit itself is null and void. That's the way I look at it. I don't know how, how anybody else feels. Right, because the chicken coop is being, has been raised, that's an issue, that's been handled. The septic's been handled.
The, the building out back is gone?
Not yet, not yet, not yet. They, they got the windows out, the, the, a vast of windows out, and, and the, the one that we hide, he, he need the permit to, in order to tear it down.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, the, the inspector didn't sign it for, for him, yeah.
Why?
I don't know why.
I thought he had it the last time he was here.
I thought it was true.
The builder was here.
And the builder's here, and he said something, they were waiting, if I correct you, I'm wrong, but it was something about the asbestos.
Almost sixteen thousand already, they, they pay for him.
It was what, I'm sorry?
Two check this one, this one over here, one check the other one, over here.
Michael Marsh. This one was in April, this one was in May. So you're looking at fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars and seventy cents. To knock down the barn here, this right here, knock down the barn and remove, dispose hollow way wood, concrete, and then grave where it was, a total price of twenty-one-five.
So they already paid?
This dump will be applied at the end of the job, the price includes two bolts on the backside that are willing to be removed and disposed of. It's not included, as Mr. Take permits and handle. Talking beyond stairs to this guy who did the report, if you want to pay him.
Before our last meeting.
Did you ever pay them?
Well, that's the proposal, then he paid him on equal, equal. And then he paid him on, on the five-eleven.
So there's no more extension?
That's how I understand it.
I, I also went after the letter of the original name from the building inspector, it was February twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, saying that this was, this was against, that they didn't have the, the permit, they, they drew on this, and they tried again, unless it was in December.
Well, again, there's no permit in hand.
So you can't say about till next month either?
No.
The builder's been coming every month, but the past two or three months. Correct.
Right.
Do you still have the same builder? What was his name?
You mean the architect?
Architect, he's still, why, why didn't he come tonight?
Usually the inspector, you know, the inspector invite him, you know, to come.
Right, the building inspector couldn't make it tonight.
But he's still involved, he still has the same architect.
So, I don't know, I'm, members of the board feel, but the way I, I'm looking at this is, there's still no permits in hand.
Does that prove that they, they paid for that?
Right.
To do their job.
Right, correct.
Last month, we, we had a list of what we required them to do, right?
They did on the side of the building.
They couldn't do anything with the property line.
Right.
Wasn't any time for that anyway.
Correct. And then it was coming down, I thought that should, they had agreed upon last meeting.
Move, it is moved or the lot line, or, or to a limit violation, which would be the tear down. The chicken coop structure, I don't understand, was the chicken coop taken down or not?
No.
It's paid for.
It's paid for.
You paid for it, but they haven't done anything. So. The last time this came up, and we, we had an error with the, with the vote count, because somebody's forty, but. Your friend earlier tonight just. Ooh, the knife! I, I'm, again, I'm gonna say it again, I would like to see you have the six apartments. I, I wanna see the six apartments, you bought it as six, you've been taxed at the six apartments.
It originally was permitted for the six back in?
No, four.
Four.
And then?
In sixty-eight.
Right.
It was sold on those six.
It was sold on the six, and the town's been taxing the six, and it doesn't affect the town at all, or the neighborhood at all. That being said, okay, I'm for you, I wanna see you get the six, but things have to be done correctly, in my opinion. If we deny this, there's a two-year wait, unless they go to the Board of Appeals, I believe.
They go to the planning board?
Yeah, excuse me, the planning board, and start the process over. I think that that's what should happen, because it's gonna give them time, now that they know what they have to do. Because our hands are tied, and, and we're just gonna get in trouble here if we move forward with this. I, I think that's what they need to do. And I wanna see you get the six, you know, it's, it's not that.
If you're denying right now, they're gonna have to.
They're gonna have to go.
Wait for two years.
No, they can go to the planning board, correct?
It's just gonna stall more time.
But they, but they need the time anyway, to, to get all that demolition.
There's no, there's no way to hold it till next month.
Right.
They have ninety days from the close of the hearing, so ninety days would actually be.
When's the time, already over?
Ninety days would actually be what?
Would be a day before the next meeting.
Can we have a special meeting for them, just to hold it until then, see what, why they, they paid already?
Right, I would do that.
They paid for the, they paid for the tearing down.
Yes.
And maybe if we just make a special.
I would.
Meeting for them, just to see what, what's going on.
That's not gonna change a lot, I don't know.
No, no, no.
But it's gonna change, they turned down the building, they already paid for that. They already in, in progress are doing that.
Right.
So if we allow them the time from now until before the next meeting, give them a meeting before that, just for them.
Yeah.
Just to see, to have the building inspector on hand, and, and their representative come in here and explain to us what is really going on. Then we can say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna deny you.
Okay.
Other than that, we can, you know, I, I, just to design that they go to the planning board, then go through the motion again, they're already in, in the process.
So, so are we saying that the chicken coop and that portion of the building would be gone for this?
No, 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 no.
It has to be gone.
What we're saying is, is he has to have the permits to do that.
They have the permits. They'll, they'll have the time from now until we give them a, a meeting.
To get the permit.
To get the permit from the building inspector, that, they already paid for it.
Yes.
The building inspector has to sign off that, they're gonna destroy that building. And we'll say, okay, when's the next meeting?
July what?
July eighth.
And then ninety days expires July ninth?
July seventh.
I'm sorry?
July seventh, technically, well.
Oh, July, so.
So we can do it at the end of this month, in, in June, the end of June. Give them a.
This is a year ago now, she helped us. But we could, if, if people wanted to do that.
They already spent a lot of money.
People wanted to do that, I'm not, we, we could grant it with those conditions.
With the conditions.
And it can't be exercised until they get their stuff together.
I think that's a better idea, to be honest with you, my own personal.
But that would give them the six.
Yep.
I mean, also, also basically, we were bullied into getting the six, I mean, they weren't. But someone years ago decided to just add two more units and not follow any of the procedures we were kind of forced to do, because these poor people are in this position, which isn't the way.
We gotta understand what our laws.
Right, and they turned it around.
There was a selectmen at the time.
Before my time.
That was actually three, also, cuz the memory.
That's right, we were in the pool house.
Well, it sounds to me like that's our, that's our two choices. Either to issue a special permit with conditions that by the end of the ninety days, the permits, the building permits are...
They have to have a building permit, the permits.
If they get the special permit, I think they have two years to, to act on that special permit.
Before it expires.
Give them another two years to organize themselves, meet the conditions, and pull the building permit for whatever it is, or pull the permit that we're up to.
They're gonna have to have...
And if they don't, it goes away. And they go back to four. We don't keep that in meetings.
I think they finally get their act together with the architect.
And if they didn't bring these in that, I think that'd be a whole different ballgame, too.
Like, I feel differently today about having...
What are those dated?
April ninth.
This is showing that, that paid like two deposits for the removal of the chicken coop, pending, uh, but they have to have a permit, a building permit in order to raise the, the structures.
So the building, the building inspector has to issue that permit.
Before the building inspector is over.
Well, in two years. Our special permit...
If they're gonna raise that building, they're gonna have to have a special, they have to have a permit to demolish that building.
Correct.
They have, the building inspector hasn't given one.
To, to be able to have the two extra units on our special permit, if we, if that's what we did today. It would have nothing to do with those building permits, it would have everything to do with the fact that they meet the fact that the chicken coop is gone, the lot lines are correct, and we wouldn't have any more. And if they make it, they make it, if they don't, the social market goes away.
Okay, I, I feel the special permit should also state that the addition that's, that's on, over the property line, on the adjacent property, is, is specifically to be removed, not, no more sale, no more anything, it's gonna be removed.
The landlord don't wanna sell this property.
Right, and the landlord, that seems, after talking with Mr. Picaroli, too, that seems to be the stickler, too, cuz he's gotta get the adjacent property owner to sign up.
How much of that's gonna be removed?
It's a foot and a half, eighteen inches?
Yeah, but, but structurally, how much? Yeah, it was easy enough to rip down, cuz it wasn't, it wasn't structurally attached, it was like a... That is not a little precondition that they would...
It used to be a, a travally.
So there's, there's no apartment in there?
Yeah, no, 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 it was an addition for a travally.
So that's an empty space, even with the six apartments?
Yeah, it's an empty space.
And so, and so how, how many feet back off the line is that?
Probably about ten, twelve feet.
Okay.
Till the foundation, anyway, till a foot.
Okay.
They put, they put a travally in there, and they broke a little, little pocket, I think.
Okay, what's, what's the pleasure of the board, how do you wanna, how do you work this?
The building removed, left from the lot line. The building raised.
The building to include the chicken coop in the back, right?
Both, both of them have to be raised, it's a little purpose.
So remove any portion of the building over the lot lines, right? And remove...
The building permit issued for the removal of the chicken coop.
Maybe she said remove the chicken coop, right?
Well...
Right, demolition, is that there?
Demolition permit.
Yeah, to raise the, the chicken coop. Now, I mean, like you said, we've been working on this since July two thousand eighteen, do you wanna put a time certain on this?
June twenty-eighth?
It's whatever the, whatever the condition of the permit.
Doesn't have to be before the next meeting?
Within sixty days of the issuing of the permit.
Or doesn't need to be before the next meeting.
Well, to, to be able to have the two units, they have to meet the requirements of the special permit.
Right.
So they wouldn't get it at all, until they do both of these things, and they have to be cleared.
The building has to be removed, the other shit has gotta be removed before they even start on this, on the...
Is there another building, the chicken coop, wasn't there something else that was already down?
No, they installed it.
It was, uh...
The pool house? That was, that was not...
No, 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 the pool house wasn't coming down, it's just, the pool house is just not gonna be used as a residence.
Did the septic system get put back on the right lot?
Yes.
They did that already?
It, it becomes on the right lot when that chicken coop is up.
Right, that's how I understood it. Because that's, that's the retreat.
Yeah, that's the retreat, right.
Right. Becomes part of the forty thousand square.
Okay, but they still have to change a lot of that, and they had gone to the planning board, I think, but I don't know, did they?
No, the only thing that they ever changed, oh, oh, I see.
The septic was on a different lot, and they were gonna combine those lots, cuz I don't think they had forty thousand square feet to have a building.
No, by the way, I think the building, I think the building was drawn or something.
I don't think they actually got that size.
Yeah, I think they, I think they drew it, they did that. I think it was drawn.
Can we see that?
Yeah.
This is the chicken coop.
Yeah.
And where is the apartment?
Okay, so this is the septic, that's inside. Did they change it?
See, once this is raised, then this becomes part of the solar.
Yeah, his entrance word comes to the other side.
Yeah, but this is, so this is proposed lot line.
Once that's raised.
At one point. I think there's still two separate lots, and do you guys merge these lots together?
You put them together, these lots?
We can just say it, make sure they are.
No, this is gonna be that new lot.
The lot, yes.
This is a way out of the red hole.
And, and this, this portion of the building here would be raised, right?
This is, this is gonna be done.
That's coming down.
Three feet.
Three feet, three feet.
Yeah, you gotta take it out. Take this out, take this out.
Yeah, yeah.
The building, you call the building inspector, tell him you need the permit to take it out. You already paid for that, to take it out.
So we would have to apply, or, or?
No, the building, you call the building inspector, have your, your man that was here the other day, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
Have him call the building inspector, and then they'll give you the, the demolition permit.
Oh, I see, okay.
Once you give them the demolition permit, then you're all set.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
You should just get it for both on the same.
Get them for this one, and then put it on the same.
We can put it for both.
Yeah, both, you gotta take them both at the same time.
So they need to, they need to get rid of this.
Yeah, yeah, this one, and this one.
They need to get rid of that, and they need to make sure that the, the lot is forty thousand square feet now, and it's united to sell, but that's a proposed lot, so I don't know if they've got that figured in. So the septic, the septic needs to be on the same line as the building, and the lot needs to be at least forty thousand square. They need all those, they can have their two, and then it's down, and they have two years to figure it out. Does that make sense?
Right.
I think that's correct, right? Is there anything else?
What did they, during the last meeting, too, that, I know the fire chief inspector's been out there, you know, so it was the building inspector's main concern that, for the safety of the tenants, that it be maintained to a minimum safety level, so as not to jeopardize, you know, the well-being of any of the tenants. And from what I've gathered, Rob, was the building inspector from the last time, that they had been meeting that requirement. So that, that was a, that was a big issue, you know, yesterday, as long as, as long as work was progressing, people were safe, and things were getting done.
You have to, you have to start destroying that building, take the building up.
Yeah.
Then everything will fall into place.
Okay, sure.
Okay?
And in order to do that, you need those permits from the building inspector.
Have your guy call the building.
We can issue the special permit contingent upon...
All this stuff.
The, uh...
We can say the safety stuff, right?
That's fine, that's fine. It meets the requirements of, of the residential safety requirements as, as issued or as, from the building inspector and the fire inspector.
Not that this has anything to do with us, what's out of our hands, but the fact that their architect is not here, I'm very concerned that what we're specifying here is not gonna make it to the architect.
Yeah, but the...
They will not give them the two units until they do all that stuff.
Should, should we have, um... Send one to the architect?
That's what I'm saying.
Some decision that we made tonight to the architect.
Everybody can be well, but if it gets lost in translation. We just waste that, we just waste that time. So I, I, I think, in this situation, we should do something to make sure the copy goes to, the copy goes to the architect, of my decision here tonight, so...
We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, just, just because, this has been so arduous.
You gotta protect ourselves, and protect the...
Absolutely, on the topic, right. All right, well, I'll accept a, a motion regarding petition number eight-eight-six.
I, I will make a motion to accept petition eight-eight-six with following conditions. Uh, that any portion of the building located over the current lot lines be removed, that the, any chicken coop on the property be raised and demolished, that the lot with the septic system be on the same, that the septic system be on the same lot as the multifamily dwelling, and that lot has at least forty thousand square feet, and that the building meets all minimum safety levels as required by the building inspector and the fire chief.
And this is all continued upon the issuance of the building permits to raise both structures.
And, yes, and, and the additional two.
Right.
The additional two units.
Anybody else have any other additions or deletions they'd like to see?
Is there a timeframe on this, until this has to happen?
There's a timeframe for when the permits, the special permit would expire.
Okay.
Or you can set a, a specific one-year date, or a two-year? Okay.
I would, I think, I think we've covered it.
No, no, I'll put a date on it and tell the building inspector, give them that.
You don't get to two years, but the building inspector will do that.
Yes.
We can do tell the building, if, you know, give them a permit, they have to raise it within some period.
Of course, this is, this is yours, too, actually, we're gonna have to get a copy. Oh, do you? Oh, okay, so there's a motion on the floor to accept petition number eight-eight-six with conditions, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a voice vote. Casaya?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, five-zero-zero, it passes. All right, and you'll have to find out, you know...
All the...
Black. Yeah. Can we ask Alana to have them give the architects, them to give their contact information to the architect, if she doesn't have it?
How about she have it?
Can you send a, send the decision to the architect?
His name?
Just if you could send it.
Want a copy of this?
Um, I don't have any, I don't have a card.
We have that, it's...
What's that?
I said Jose Guzman is the architect, but I don't have any.
All right, we'll refund it. All right, and if you could send a, a specific copy of that to Rob Picaroli, the building inspector. Okay, that's where we are, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, last one. How we doing?
I'm doing good.
We're running a little late, but, there, there you go.
No worries.
Okay, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public meeting. Meeting number one of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Campbell Lewis for variance for off-street parking and minimum loading area of three thirty Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Hutton Team LLC of seven thirty-six Cherry Street, Chattanooga, Tennessee, as shown on Assessor's map sixty-three, lot thirty, title reference book four-two-seven-five-eight, page one. The, excuse me, the applicant seeks variance permitting to the off, seeks permitting to the off-street parking requirements in accordance with the Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven fourteen, and minimum loading area, section one sixty-seven dash three. First, a variance is requested for thirty-four parking spaces down from the required seventy-three parking spaces, section one sixty-seven dash fourteen F. For the seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five square foot retail facility. Second, a variance is requested for seventeen parking spaces within a paved area of a hundred and eighty square feet, down from the required two hundred square feet, section one sixty-seven fourteen. Third, a variance is requested for a proposed loading area with dimensions of twenty and a half feet wide by thirty-five feet long, as opposed to the minimum required loading area, dimensions of fourteen feet wide by forty-five feet, section one sixty-seven dash three. Area is zoned commercial business petition eight ninety-four. How are you?
I'm good, gentlemen, how are you?
Very well.
For the record, my name's Kevin Solely, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts with an office located at twenty-five Braintree Hill.
The name of your company?
Solely Engineering, Braintree, Massachusetts, and it's Solely Engineering, sorry about that. Um, so, so again, thank you, gentlemen, I forgot we were coming before again tonight. We've had, this is actually our third public hearing for this project. I think at our last meeting, we had a very good, robust discussion about what we're proposing, and the reasoning behind the request for our variances, again, you know, we're, we're, the primary variance that we're requesting is, has to do with the number of parking spaces that we've, that are required for general retail use. And what we provided is, rather than provide the one space for one hundred square feet that's required, we're requesting a variance of one space per two hundred and twenty square feet. And what we've done and provided to the, to the, to the board is, is all of the industry data, empirical data, which supports the fact that a automotive retail, auto parts retail store does in fact have a different parking requirement than a general retail store. We provided evidence and analysis done by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which clearly establishes, you know, through a number of studies that auto parts retail stores have a far less requirement than a general retail store, which we believe supports our, our request for the variance. Um, I think we had a very good discussion at the last, at the last meeting, and, and we did provide a letter which kind of just basically more succinctly summarized all of our discussions. Um, but I know that the big thing was a request to have town, the town attorney offer an opinion. Um, so I, I guess I was curious, we did try to coordinate with, with staff, and I guess you did offer one, but it is proprietary at this point, so we'd be curious to hear if the, the board did receive that, if there's been any, and then how we could possibly discuss that, or answer any question, answer any questions that may have come through that opinion.
Okay, I did have a, a question. Looking at the, the initial site plan, without the variance, is there room on the property with a seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five square foot building? Is there room enough to meet the required parking spaces on the lot itself?
Uh, no, there's, there is not. And, and again, one of the uniqueness of this particular application from a, from a use standpoint, is while it is for retail use, the auto parts retail store, again, is very, is very unique in that it isn't consistent with your normal retail store.
Now, with the, with the, the land in the back, the wetlands in the back, total, total square footage of, of the lot, would it be able to meet the, the parking lot requirement?
So, so...
Including the wetlands out back?
If the lot was high and dry, would it be enough?
If the lot was high and dry, would it be enough for the forty-two parking spots?
If we were to?
Using all the land available?
If we were to push the envelope and, and?
No, 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 pretend.
Right.
That's what we're talking about, right? Right? That's what we're talking about. Pretend that everything was high and dry. Is there enough space for the forty-two?
Uh, for the one per one-seventy-five? Well, the, the, the problem with the one per one-seventy-five is that it, that's only, that's only eligible if you have the additional open space. So if we were to provide, we could not provide both the, we could not provide the open space in order to meet that one per one-seventy-five one. We could provide additional spaces to meet a one per one-seventy-five requirement, but it would not, it would not provide the, the open space to get that, um, different requirement.
Uh, I'm still not, not pleased answering the question the way we want it. What we're asking is, is that lot, would that lot, in a normal situation, without any wetlands, be big enough for the proposed size of the building and the, uh, and meet the requirements of the bylaws for parking spaces?
If it was all dry?
We're, we're, we're working towards, I think, uh, what hardship is. So that lot is big enough normally to fit the building and, uh, satisfy the bylaws as far as the, the, the parking spaces? That's the question we're asking. In other words, could you put seventy-three parking spaces on that lot?
No.
If everything was high and dry, with no wetlands there?
No. No, and, and again, but, but from a, what, what, what we provided is, 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 you know, for the record and with, you know, sufficient documentation, we believe is that the, the strict adherence of the general retail parking requirement for an automotive retail, uh, auto parts store is what creates the hardship, because that strict adherence of a, of a retail parking ratio for a use that doesn't operate within the general retail standards is, is what creates the hardship, because.
We don't have that as part of our, our definition for retail. We don't have a specific breakdown for that.
Which is, again, which is why we, we, we seek the variance through the zoning board of appeals. And I, and I believe, again, if you look at a general retail store and the normal floor plan of that retail store, you look at how many square feet would be allocated for retail display, retail sales area, et cetera, versus, versus, versus storage and, and essentially, you know, warehousing or so. This footprint, this seventy-two hundred square foot footprint has only three thousand square feet of, of, of retail space. Because the thing is, when you go in and you need a, a, a carburetor for a specific car, they need to be able to hold and house all the different makes of that specific auto part. So that's why those auto parts retail stores have such a, a starkly different parking requirement than what your general retail does. And again, just to, to summarize as well, too, you know, consistent with how the, um, uh, the board of health has, has approved a waiver for the overall septic generation required, or the septic, uh, system sizing for this, they've done it specific for this specific use. We're also requesting this variance be granted only for auto parts retail use on this property. So it's not as if someone can come in and propose a general retail use and still use the full seventy-two hundred square foot building. We're looking for a variance that's very specific in the use, so that for seventy-two hundred square foot auto parts retail store, it can have, it can provide a parking ratio of one space for two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty square feet rather than the general retail requirement of one for two hundred.
And as was, was mentioned at our last meeting, and, and Tom Conson did agree, that, uh, a matter of voting on this would not be setting any type of precedent. I mean, uh, as far as, uh, an auto retailer, another auto retailer coming to the town of Halifax and being able to say, you know, well, you set the precedent, you did it for O'Reilly, you can do it for me. Uh, she cited specific case law, uh, the building inspector Franklin versus, uh, New England Inc., forty-eight Mass. appellate court seven oh nine, that each case is, uh, based on, uh, on its own merit, as we mentioned at the last meeting. She did agree with you on that.
Hopefully not just that.
Well, I'm, I still, I, and you're asking for three variances, and then every variance you have to have, you have to meet, and I don't know the, the, what the Title V stuff was for their, their requirements. Our requirements for variances are pretty strict. And, and you could fit the parking spaces if you change the size of the building. So if you, there is nothing requiring that an auto parts retailer have the sized building that you have based on our bylaws. That would, that would be a varied thing that we would do. You want to build that sized building. Our bylaws require that, and nothing about the financial hardship or the topography of the land allows us to vary that. That's the issue.
Well, I think, so, so part of that, too, is, so again, this, this site being proposed for O'Reilly Auto Parts. O'Reilly, O'Reilly Auto Parts is a Fortune five hundred company. It is, um, it's, it provides a very good and valuable, um, service to the communities it invests in, and it has specific prototypes. They will only build stores that fit into a certain box, because that allows them to operate their stores the same way and be consistent, so that the same shopper is gonna have the same experience of O'Reilly's in Halifax, Mass. That they'll have in Rockland, Massachusetts, or wherever else they're being constructed.
And, and there's nothing in our by, sorry to take, but there's nothing in our bylaws that says that they can't do that. It's just on this size of the lot, they can't.
Well, and, and again, to, 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 to kind of reiterate our, our position, we feel that providing, you know, uh, the, the strict enforcement of a parking ratio of one per one hundred for a auto parts retail store is in itself is what creates the, the, the hardship. And strict adherence of that requirement creates a hardship, because there's no need for that much parking. But by, by implementing a requirement like that, you're creating, you're creating, uh, a requirement to construct far more parking than what's required from an operations standpoint. And it's, and again, as we kind of discussed at the last hearing, even the own plan of, the own plan of conservation development talks about trying to reduce impervious surfaces. It talks about trying to minimize, um, uh, you know, walk, stormwater runoff, et cetera, things like that. And again, just to kind of talk a little bit more about the history, you know, so this, this, this is a piece of property along Plymouth Street, in a, in a, you know, heavily traveled commercial corridor, that there's currently, we know that there's currently issues with, with the property itself, and there's issues with some, um, uh, stormwater management of this site and the site adjacent to it. The site's gone through approvals with wetlands, with planning and zoning. Um, we've worked with the highway department, who has actually a drainage overflow that comes through this property, which contributes to some of that downstream flooding. And I think we have a unique opportunity right now to, um, allow for some investment into the, into the property and the community to actually fix a lot of those problems. We're able to actually, you know, um, uh, deal with stormwater management, provide water quality improvements, and actually fix some of those hydrologies which exist today. And we feel that, and again, we've, we, we strongly believe and we feel that we've provided sufficient evidence that, that the, the board can rely upon.
However, the, the attorney does cite case law, Bruce's versus the Board of Appeals in Hingham, uh, three forty-three Mass. case four twenty-one nineteen sixty-two, that the size of the lot in and of itself does not constitute a hardship. Must show, the applicant would have to show that due to the soil conditions, which I do believe is a, is something you address, the shape or the topography of the property, a little, a literal enforcement of the bylaw is not possible. But that's not what we have. And, uh, a property or a lot lacking sufficient area is not eligible for a variance based solely on this condition, and benefits to the municipality may not be considered.
And, and, and that's a great point, because we aren't requesting it because of the size of the lot. We're requesting it because of the?
Lot. That's basically what you're applying for, is be, is a variance to the size of the lot because the seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five square foot building could not fit.
If, if, if the, the board felt strongly about it, but what we've been able to do is design something that fits within the operational requirements of the tenant, which is a specific tenant in this use, for a specific retail use. Um, so if, if the board felt strongly about that particular requirement, we could certainly do that. But we, I think we provided documentation evidence that, you know, the site as designed works from an operational standpoint and meets those tenant requirements. Um, and we feel that it is something that this board does have the legal authority to waive in terms of issuing a warrant.
There was no, no question she agreed that the board does have the, uh, the right to, uh, to grant the variance. Oh, to grant a variance. She said there were three conditions that the board need to specifically keep in mind in order to grant the variance, which it'd be, it'll be your decision to find, to determine how much of it that they do meet. That owing to circumstances relating, number one, that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and specifically affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Number two was a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. And three, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent, from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. She went on to say that a nexus must exist between the property condition, the soil conditions, the shape, the topog, the topography, and the hardship, she put, and the type of business, which in her opinion has not yet been shown by the applicant's submittal. Yes, please.
So what that means to me, I'm gonna add one more thing in, in her opinion, was, um, a property or lot lacking sufficient area is not eligible for a variance based solely on this condition, and the benefits of the tax base of the municipality may, municipality may not be considered. So taking all this together comes back to our very first question. If that lot was big enough for that sized building and, was it seventy-two or seventy-three?
Seventy-three.
Parking spaces, we could sit here and say, okay, the lot's big enough for the bylaws, but because of the soil conditions, the wetlands in the back and all that, we can grant you a variance. I would actually like to remove more of the parking spots, increase the loading dock, so there's one variance that goes away, increase the size of the parking spots a little bit, the second one goes away. You, your, your study showed the peak was fourteen customers.
Yes.
So what if we went down to thirty or twenty-five parking spots? And now we only have one variance, and the variance is the number of parking spots. But I'm having a problem because our hands are tied because of the lot size. If the lots, if you can show that the lot size is big enough, pretending that the, the ground's high and dry for that sized building and the appropriate number of parking spots to meet the bu, bu, uh, bylaws, we are positioned according to our attorney now to grant you all these variants, all these conditions. So if you can show that, um, um, and I, I'd like to see it happen, but we have to follow the rules. So can you show that?
We can certainly, um.
And actually, to add, it's actually.
No, no.
To add to that, you wouldn't even need to be here, because you wouldn't need a variance if the building met the, if the building was, and this is the thing, this is the very first meeting we had, if the building was smaller, you wouldn't need as many parking spots, you wouldn't need more room for the loading area, and we wouldn't have had any of these meetings, which is why the bylaw allows for that. And that, and I don't know if there's a space, because there are many one, like, I, I've said the whole time I'm not against you guys coming to town, I think it's, it, but I don't think that specifically zoning boards were restricted from finding something they want in town and changing the rules for something they want in town. And, and that's what this might be. What they say is if, if something comes to town and they are, because of a, a certain set of criteria, not able to do it, that's unduly unfair on that person. That's why the variances exist. Special permits are totally different. Variances are, are, are strict. And it, it, the only thing keeping us continuing to meet is the size of the building. Size of the building is small, the parking lots will be smaller.
I would agree with Dan. I would agree with Dan that if, if the, uh, the building, you know, fit on the lot and we had enough area to accommodate, to fit, to meet the requirements of the bylaw, I would be personally more apt to vote in favor of reducing the number of parking spaces for just that very purpose, for the runoff, for the topography and whatnot. However, like, like Peter just said.
You might, you might wanna ask for it just because, like.
Right.
I don't.
But the fact that it can't be met.
Right.
With a seventy-two hundred and?
Right.
Square foot building on, on that particular sized lot, uh, would be changing.
But that's a key point to the hardship, is they have a business model, and that's their minimum sized building for that business model. And so that business model is what we want. That, that building size is part of the legitimate reason we can grant a variance, because it, uh, the type of, it specifically says type of business. So that is their business model.
So this, so the size of the building does not play in this, in this matter?
Well.
Only the topography, the land, and the parking?
Yes, but it, it goes to hardship. The, the type of business goes to hardship. That's one, that's part of the nexus.
Substantial financial detriment, which means if the variance was, you had to tear your house down, that's a substant, substantial financial detriment. I don't think potential profits of a, of a business that doesn't already exist counts as substantial hardship. And she's mentioned stuff in there that kind of speaks, I don't, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I'm just going back.
And I, mostly because if this lot size was slightly bigger, there wouldn't be any need for a variance at all.
Right.
And that speaks to the fact that if they don't have a substantial financial hardship, they have a lot size hardship.
But I, but I think to, to your point about the building itself, you, you, we have to, and I wanna try to keep coming, bringing it back to this. The, the Halifax zoning regulations have one parking requirement for all retail uses, and they actually lump it into a number of other uses.
Because that's what we have to work with.
I understand.
That's what our bylaws says.
I, I understand, but, but, but our position is that the building itself, the use itself, the retail use, this is not your, this is very unique, and then we have a seventy-two hundred square foot building, of which only three thousand square feet is actually retail area. Everything else is, is back of house, it's storage. And so, so it is, it is unique in that it is not a, a, a strict retail building, and if you had, I, because I agree with you. If we wanted to build a seventy-two hundred square foot retail building that was the same as every other retail building out there, this board would have a hard time approving that hardship, because we're doing exactly what you said, picking a business that you wanted that didn't fit into town. That's not what we're, what we're requesting a variance for. We're requesting a variance because we have a specific type of retail use that this board gets to include in the condition of the variance itself, which says you can provide one space for two hundred and twenty square feet for a auto parts retail store to satisfy parking requirements instead of the one per one hundred. And that's what I wanna make sure that, that we kind of keep coming back to, is what we're requesting to vary is not, is simply the ratio at which we have to provide parking. And that's completely, that's, that's established in the Halifax regs, because it says in the regulations, all other has to come to the zoning board of appeals for approval. So I think that's exactly how the bylaws and the Commonwealth statutes enable us to be here. Because if, if, if all those, if all those things weren't in perfect harmony, we could not come here and make this what we believe is a reasonable request to support the variance.
I, I know we keep on coming back to parking spaces, but also you could go with open space, which with forty-five percent of the land is open space, you don't need seventy-three parking spaces. All you need is half that.
We need one per one-seventy-five versus the one for one-hundred.
So I mean, it's not like we're, we're not demanding that you have so many parking spaces. You have an option of not putting the parking spaces in and have open land. So it still goes back to the size of the lot, and that's where the, that's where everything is being hinged on.
But, but I think even with that, though, even if, even if we were providing the open space and the Halifax, we're still looking for a ratio of one per one-seventy-five, we would stare, we could still very well be before this board requesting a variance for one per two-twenty, because that's what the use acquires. That's what the use needs from an operations standpoint. So, so the requirement to build either one for one-seventy-five or one for one hundred, that in itself creates the hardship. And, and frankly, it's detrimental to the environment and to the community to, to require all that surplus parking in excess pervious surface, in excess stormwater runoff, et cetera, which could affect downstream neighbors, et cetera, from a flooding standpoint. So, so I think, I, I do wanna kind of keep bringing it back to, again, we're, we're, this is very specific and unique, and this board has the ability to do that.
But to Dan's point, if, if it was that scenario where you were meeting the bylaws requirements and you were asking for a variance on top of already meeting our requirements, that would be a totally different conversation, a different conversation. You're asking us to, to, if you were meeting the bylaws and asked to limit the parking, I think everybody would have a reasonable conversation. The concern is that you can't here, and you, and you can't.
But, but to, to, to Dan's point, but, but to Dan's point, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about a building, right? And we're, and that building has a, it, we, we cannot build an O'Reilly's Auto Parts at less than that square footage, because they won't invest to build. at less than that square footage because they won't invest to build a store and commit for long-term lease.
Anyone wants to build a certain square foot house or a certain square foot, anything in this building could come to us and say, well, this is what we need for us to live in this house. Because I have seventeen kids and I need this square footage and I have to build, that's not a hardship.
I mean, I would, if we were to say...
We talk about building size all the time.
If we were, if we were saying we were having a generic auto retail, auto parts store, then I would tend to agree with you. But we're talking about a national chain which has a very, you know, which is, which is a highly reputable company that does great things for the communities that they invest into. And so I don't necessarily think it's the same as just an owner saying, this is the house we have to build. Because it is, I do think it's a little bit unique. And if, and if we, and if, and again, we have all the additional, not only empirical data of studies of sites that we've actually studied ourselves, but also all the industry standard I T E trip generation that supports and parking generation that supports the requests for the specific variance we're requesting.
Everything you've done, I think, has been fantastic.
Yes.
You've done everything you can possibly do to make this building fit in this property. And that's one of the problems, something happened. I'm having a real hard time because we have, we have opinions here and we have our bylaws here that are giving us a hard time right now.
So let's, so I guess, I've tried to do my best of figuring out what those, what those, what are preventing, what are presenting those roadblocks to you? So if, how else can I?
So you've done everything except to make the buildings small. The only thing you need to do like that and that was the beginning of the...
Well, are we talking about the seventy-two-hundred square feet? But the retail area is only thirty-two-hundred. That's what they're applying for thirty-four square, thirty-four five square feet, right?
Usually based on...
I mean, the other part of the building is just nothing but a warehouse.
Right. And that's, and that's part...
Which is no different from Walmart.
Yeah, no different. Walmart is like, we put, Walmart is one of the hundred, right?
Yeah, but, but...
Every car, you know...
But they probably met the bylaw already and we varied, you know?
They have thirty-two acres.
Right. Like that's the...
And what they have here is...
Their warehouse storage area is part of the building versus the retail floor.
What you have here, you know, Walmart is this big table. This is this little piece of paper. That's what we're trying to work on.
But this is what this company here is asking for this specific variance. So they, and again, this opinion from our attorney was very, was very detailed, okay? And the burden of proof is on them, the petitioners. I feel they've done a good job proving that this is the smallest building we can live with for an O'Reilly, right?
That's right.
Or for any parts store for that matter.
Well, but just for them, specifically their business model. And there has to be a nexus, says it right here between, and this is the problem. Topography, soil conditions or shape. And it specifically says, the shape and it should be noted that the shape of a property or the lot should not be confused with the size. So I'm at a very, forget everything else, I'm at a very fundamental question. And it was the first question we asked. If you have any old drawings or anything that show seventy-three parking spots with the seventy-two-hundred square foot building on the correct lot size, forget about open space, forget about wetlands, forget about everything else. If you can fit that on there, then we are allowed to, whether we do or not, we are allowed at this point to grant a variance. Then we can have a discussion about what the variances should be.
But the fact that it doesn't fit at all.
So wait a minute, but that's where I'm at and nothing's gonna change my mind from that. So I need to be shown that.
So the, so the, okay, we may be able to, we may be able to show that.
That's what I would need to see.
But again, even if we show that again, our specific request is for a waiver of a auto parts retail store. And that's inconsistent with what Commonwealth, the bylaws allow us to do and the statutes allow us to do. And it's also consistent with what just the Board of Health just did. Because of the specific use, they're saying that yes, an auto parts retail store can build a septic system this size and function and get a permit and operate, which is similar to what we're requesting from you, you know?
You specifically said that they varied the requirement, the Board of Health, on the size.
Yes.
I didn't know that the Board of Health could issue variances.
They can and they did.
But their state requirements might be fundamentally different than ours, like...
I think their state, I think the state requirements are...
I don't think that's, we've sat the workshop, so they tell, they tell you, stuff gets thrown out all the time because the hardship was not substantial enough or the topography wasn't substantial enough.
And those things, and yes, I...
And none of, and none of that exists if the building is small.
So, but, but there's, again, it all comes back to the type of use that we're requesting the variance for.
And you want us to create a new use?
No, no. We want you to simply allow, again, from a variance standpoint, auto parts retail stores can provide a parking ratio of one per two-twenty.
Create a new use.
But that's not, we don't get to do that.
You do. Your zoning regulations, the zoning regulations instruct us to come to you to do that.
If you need a variance from our current bylaw based on substantial financial hardship or topography of the land or something like, or the shape of the lot.
Or a business model.
Or a business model.
Or a business model.
Or a business model. Yes, so the business model of...
The nexus of all those things and I, we're not seeing that here.
Well, I am.
Yeah.
But what I'm not seeing is, obviously, we're gonna go something very similar to what you have in your hands, but we need to be shown that the lot is big enough for the original intent. If you can show that, then we can have a discussion.
It's not. That's, that's my only point. Like, they could put that anywhere in town if they had the size and if they could fit it on the lot that they have.
Right, but they can't because of soil conditions. But we can't even address that, read the opinion. We can't even address that because the size of the lot is not to be taken into consideration for the variance.
That's exactly, exactly right.
Right, right. So what I'm asking is, can they show if the soil conditions were good, that they could fit it all in a lot? If they could, now we can bring everything in, that's what I'm trying to say.
We could build structured parking. We could build structured parking to add additional spaces. We could do that. We could certainly do that on this property.
But that's financial hardship for her to do a parking garage.
Just for the record, this is Campbell Lewis.
I'm the owner.
He's with Hot and, but he's the owner.
I'm speaking to whether we're able to issue a variance, whatever it may be, or not. And according to this opinion, that's the question that needs to be answered. After that, we can discuss what variances or what extent.
We could, we could show that we could build a parking structure that could accommodate the number of spaces on this property.
Well, when you say a structure, what do you mean?
Structured parking.
All right, you saying something I don't know?
A parking garage.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna fly.
That's an open up...
But, no, that, I don't believe it would because you're allowed to build parking garages in the town Halifax. It's not like they're prohibited.
Yeah, but then you wouldn't need a variance for that.
No, we wouldn't. But we also...
So we don't, when I can...
No, no, that's financial hardship. That's a hardship.
He's trying to answer your question.
No, my question is, does that lot being a parking lot?
And he said, yes, it is.
Not a building garage, a parking lot.
Oh, oh, oh.
All right, not a building garage.
No, a parking garage.
No, no, no. The way I read this opinion, okay? The way I read this opinion is, we have to, we can't take the lot size into account. If there's conditions on the lot, topography, shape, or soil conditions, now we can start issuing variances off of that. But the lot size has to be the minimum lot size. You have to show that.
So there are a few, I can give you a number of reasons to help maybe, hopefully make you feel a little bit better. There are, there are some site topographic constraints which support the need for us to provide eighteen feet deep spaces instead of twenty feet deep spaces. We've tried to, you know, grade our site and design our site to avoid retaining walls along the northern and southerly property line. Part of that design intent was to reduce those parking space depth, so we had a little bit more room from the edge of the pavement to the property lines to grade down with a normal three-to-one slope. So that, that's part of the topography of the site which could help make you feel a little bit better about the depth of the parking spaces. It also goes to the loading space itself because we're trying to design this site to provide above-ground, open stormwater detention rather than below-ground, underground detention, which is why we've kept the rear limits and that rear depth of that loading space to the constraint that it is because operationally it works and we didn't wanna push further, which may change our stormwater analysis. Additionally, we could build structured parking, so two levels of parking on this property to meet the requirement. However, from a site standpoint, because we have wetlands towards the back, if we wanted to build subsurface parking, we would have an issue with groundwater. So there is a site constraint where if we wanted to build two levels of parking, one up, one down, and if we were to try to excavate down to do that, we would have an issue with groundwater, which is evident by the fact that there's wetlands toward the rear of our property.
That's, that's not what I'm reading, but I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree with that.
And again, the primary...
I might be scratching the point, but he is making a point that it can't be done at...
Right.
Although then it becomes physically, I mean, it's gonna, the costs are gonna outweigh the site. You could actually build a building and put a roof on top of it and have a ramp up and you have parking on the whole upper deck. And the retail building is still under the canopy.
Right. And again, if, and if, and if the, the, the use itself mandated those number of spaces, we would probably consider something like that if, if it didn't create a financial hardship. But one, it would, and two, the site or the use doesn't mandate that parking ratio. And the strict adherence of that parking ratio and the nonspecificity of how the retail gets applied is what we're here requesting the variances for.
I don't have any problem myself. Moving a few parking spaces, bringing them up to the correct size, getting rid of a couple more and, you know, maybe going down to twenty-five parking spots and not needing a variance for the size of the parking spots or the loading dock and just have a variance on the number of parking spots. I don't have a problem with any of that. I think it's good for the town. I think it's, it's, it's fine. My problem is, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna put our foot in a bear trap here. Can we do it? And according to the attorney, what I've, what I wanna see is what the attorney says we need to see. That's how I'm reading the...
Okay, so let me ask you this question then. If they came in with a proposal for the, what is it, forty thousand square feet, showing the required number of parking spaces that would generate, say, just for parking, say, a five-thousand-square-foot building and showed that that fit on that forty-thousand-square-foot lot, and then came in and as part of their proposal say, okay, we'd like to get the variance to increase the size of the building to seventy-two, twenty-five and reduce the number of parking spaces. So they, originally their application is amended?
I don't think that would hold because you're asking for one building, now you're asking for a different building. I think you need to show, I'm no lawyer, but it sounds like that's...
You know, I mean, to fit the requirements of the use definition...
Right, and you could put a phone booth and have all kinds of parking and then say...
No, no, you still can't.
Right.
You still can't.
Right. I, I think, I think that they would need to show the building they want with the parking they want, we need, we require, and then say, okay, but because of soil conditions, because of topography and because of the shape, not the size, we request this variance for the number of parking permits, parking spots. I think it'd be golden, but we need to see that. That's how I, I've read this ten times now and that's how I see it.
For an garage, I know, I just looked it up. I have to do commercials on that, I don't think you can.
Thank you, and I'd accept, appreciate any input that you may have if you have, like to share.
I understand both perspectives. I think if you get to Dan's point where you can show a plan that shows all the parking spots on the lot, whether or not they're usable or not, that it fits, then I think that makes the decision for them easier. And use up all the wetlands, use up everything. They just wanna see that lot size with that particular sized building, meaning the rest of the setbacks with all the parking, then they'll be able to give you the...
And then according to our attorney, that gives us, because of all these precedent sites, this gives us the legal justification to grant the variances that you need. But that, we need to see that to be able to, according to our opinion that I'm reading over and over and over, that's what we need to see.
Yes, sir.
The definition of open...
I'm sorry, your name...
My name's Casey. I work for Sole Engineering. The definition of open space, do you guys have that with you? Because what's to stop us from making a green roof? We get the seventy-five, the one per one-seventy-five and we can definitely fit forty-two spaces on this site. What's, what happens if that's the case? Because that will put us right to the forty percent open space, but I just don't know if that definition applies for a green roof.
You want open space definition?
Yes.
I mean, she also says, in my opinion, a hardship based on the type of business is not sufficient to grant a parking variance.
It does say that. It's not been sufficiently shown.
Because we can, we can fit forty-two parking spaces, but we just don't have the open space if we put those spaces in. If we were to make those spaces green like you did in Walmart, then, and you were able to count that, which I don't think you can because you can't park in open spaces, then, then we have the forty-two parking spaces and that green space. And if it's, if we can do green roof, which is very expensive, that would be definitely a hardship on that, but...
That's the intent of the bylaw.
Right, that's the definitions for a lot of these things are...
We're waiting to also do a part for cross-access, isn't it? Or cross-parking, isn't it? Agreeing with the owner of Nasserella Farms property, Nasserella Farms? Who's our neighboring property? That's actually very common practice.
To provide, to provide...
Sufficient parking.
Parking on an off, on an off-premise, off-property, you know, on an adjoining parcel to meet those requirements through a legal access, through a legal agreement.
But I have attorneys that can drive that.
I mean, again, we're, we're trying to come back to the fact that this is a unique use.
I just wanna quote what she's saying. A hardship based on the type of business, in my opinion, a hardship based on the type of business is not sufficient to grant a parking variance.
Right, but you have to, you have to read everything.
Is it?
No, no, but, but it has to be in conjunction with topography, soil condition.
In my opinion, a hardship based on the type of business is not sufficient to grant a parking variance.
Right, there has to be additional things.
What she's saying is the applicant must show that due to soil conditions, shape or topography of the property, a literal enforcement of the bylaw is not possible. But the reason the bylaw is not possible to be literally enforced is because of the size of the building or the size of the lot.
A nexus must exist between the property conditions, soil, shape, topography, and hardship.
Which she found, which she found that this is not a hardship because of the type of business.
Right, but I do, but I do because they've, they've showed us that the smallest building they can live with...
They're saying, they don't show that anything.
Well, they have a business watch.
How much more space if the lot was able to be increased are you looking at? Because Peter's point is very well taken, so is there a way to purchase another piece of land?
And we backed up at the very beginning, yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars. I gotta just pull that out.
I don't have that either.
But hang on, but you're, so you're, so you're telling us that our budding property owner has to receive a cash windfall by selling a piece of property?
No, no.
I'm saying that to build the building you want, you have to have a plan.
Try to buy the wetlands and they decided that they wouldn't sell it to you. At least that would be an attempt that you were trying to get the right amount of land. I mean, we asked that before. Did you even attempt to try and get any, any additional land?
Yes, we actually, we actually thought we were under oppression initially and we're purchasing more land than we do. We should, we should...
Yeah, we saw that, we saw the revenge.
With the cross-access agreement, that would actually solve this issue. You can ask your language attorney. She can tell whatever she, that's a law. It's a legal document. I mean, unless you have a restriction on cross-parking.
I believe the parking, just read my reading is on, it says it has to be onsite.
That's to be onsite, so even if...
They may, may not have a provision to allow off-premise parking.
Okay, that'd be rare. That'd be...
Well, it's northeast, it's not that.
So Peter's point is really that this building doesn't fit the lot with the requirements. Dan's point is, if you can show all the parking spaces on this lot with this building, he's comfortable with it.
Then, then we're allowed to grant variances. That's what the attorney said.
But yeah, why would we be here?
No, you wouldn't need a variance now because we're pretending when they lay that out that there are no soil conditions, the fire conditions.
And then they're gonna show us.
And then, and then that's the hardship along with their business model.
But they could say that right now.
No, they can't. They have to show it. They physically have to show it with the setbacks and everything else. I don't understand what the...
We're trying to do everything we can to help them out.
And I greatly appreciate that. I genuinely, a hundred percent, very much appreciate that. And no, and and I greatly appreciate that. I I I genuinely, a hundred percent, very much appreciate that.
One last question. If we said no way, you have to reduce the size of the building, will you reduce the size of the building?
Riley's can't. Riley's won't move forward.
That to me is a hardship for that business model.
Yeah, they 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 won't move forward without their forensics. This job is dead. And if we still own the property, it's just gonna sit there forever. I will not sell the property. Like, that's how it works out.
That to me is a legitimate hardship.
You don't think, you don't take that as a self-created hardship?
Yeah, and you can't have that.
It's not-
Not, not, nor because, because of two reasons. One, they won't go walk away from it. And number two, they have a business model. This is not a one-off. They have a business model. This would be like granting a variance for a McDonald's, cause if McDonald's has a drive-through, would you say, jeez, this is gonna be the only McDonald's that doesn't have a drive-through? I mean, it's, it's, what what we're talking about is a variance and and the fundamental question is, are we allowed in this case to grant a variance? And what do we need to show to grant the variance? We can discuss that afterwards. But if they're saying this is the building we need, if the lot was a hundred percent usable, we could just have the seventy-three parking spots. But now we're gonna ask for variances because of these other conditions, we're allowed to. Now we can go back and forth all day long on what we wanna do, but I, it's just a fundamental question that needs to be answered.
And and from, but but even to the point about the building is too big, there are other uses in town permitted in the zone with a lower parking requirement than retail. The coverage for this lot is twenty-five percent building coverage. We're at nine point two percent building coverage. So the size of the building is not what's creating the 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 need, the request for the variance. It is the strict adherence of the one per one hundred partner ratio that we believe creates the hardship for this specific type of use. I understand what you're saying. If if we have to show, and I think, I actually think we can show by pulling the building forward, by providing double road parking in the back. If we push all the way to the edge, we still wouldn't exceed the coverage requirements from a building standpoint. We can handle the storm art management, we can do all those things, but there's some topographic issues, there's other reasons why that would be, you know, not optimal. And frankly, it's not, it's not in in line with the regular orderly development of the community. Which is why the Wetlands Commission looked favored upon us, Conservation looked favorably upon us, Planning and Zoning looked favorably upon us, and the Health Department looked physically upon us. It all comes back to an opportunity to 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 take a piece of property which has issues with it today that we can fix. So I think, I think I could show you a sketch which shows seventy-two parking spaces pushed to the limit with the building pulled forward a little bit, you know, very, you know, little, almost pushed all the way to the end.
No variances.
No variances. We probably could show you that. It's not, it's not a great site layout. It's not great from a traffic operation standpoint, it's not great for a number of other reasons, but I probably could show you that.
Mr. Good, Andrews, you had to give one.
I'm gonna envy you guys on this one.
We have to get the easy ones.
No, we have to get the easy, bro.
Neither do we, for that matter.
But Peter's point is that you have this size lot, you have this building, you have to meet these requirements. Another use could, you could have another use on that property and it would be a usable use of that property, so.
But remember, we only need fourteen parking spots at their peak.
Right, but you have to hit, you have to hit the zoning requirements of, this is what the zoning requirements are. You've gotta meet that and enforce those requirements.
We've gotta, we've gotta meet the ability, we've gotta, we've gotta meet the ability to be able to issue variances based on topography, soil condition and shape and not lot size. Also hardship based on the business, the type of business. So if you can show those things and it's, and it's your burden to show them, it's not our burden, it's your burden to show them, that hey, we would normally be able to put the building we want and meet the zoning bylaw requirements for parking, but now we can't because of the type of business model and we can't because of topography, soil conditions and shape, and we keep saying it. Then we can legitimately and legally grant you variances.
I mean, I I respectfully believe that you can legitimately and legally grant a variance as we've requested. And and I've seen so many communities in the Commonwealth grant similar variances for for use, for parking. That's not a a a a freak thing. That happens all the time when you look at specific uses. So that is, that is completely within the the bounds of 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 you and and so I respectfully, you know, maybe disagree a little bit um, with that, cause I, cause there's evident case law that that shows many ZBAs and zoning boards of appeals granting similar, similar variances. But all that being said, if if all this board needs is a sketch showing seventy-three parking spaces in the site developed to the max with this size building, I actually think we can, that is something that we can provide.
It's all I need, I don't worry about anybody else. All open space.
Seventy-three parking spaces are the equivalent of open spaces. And if you can take every inch of land that you have there and it falls on other-
And meet every, everything else, like it's just-
Yeah, oh, no, we can, we can, we can, we can meet other, there are, we can meet, there are not landscape setbacks that we have to contend with. There are not other setbacks we have to contend with. We have to contend with building setbacks. We have to contend with building coverage. You know, um, things like that. We more than comply with all of those elements. And and I think we probably could do a sketch showing that. If you wanna take a five-minute break, I might be able to do it by that. Yeah, I was thinking, let's do it. I came from Chatham, Tennessee. Now, I don't know if, I don't, but but as we've had this discussion, I think this potentially addresses your concerns. I think there are some other members who may still have other concerns, so if there are other things that we can talk through that I wanna make sure that we have a good solid understanding of.
I'm I'm interested. What I don't wanna see is a, is a sketch of fake parking spots that show me that-
I'm an engineer, I don't do stuff.
That's not a thing. Like, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna take five minutes and and draw up the cartoon of what things might look like and have it not be correct, just so we can make this happen. Cause I I've been, the very first question I asked, and it was clearly a shock when I asked it, was I have no idea what the hardship is and I'm still having trouble finding what the hardship is.
So, so, so-
Come on, what do we have for time on this, by the way?
Um, a hundred days, which would be June twenty-second.
And when's that next meeting? June?
July eighth.
Make it a great extent if they wanna do that.
I personally would rather do that. Put it up till the next meeting instead of doing a five-minute sketch in the kitchen on, that's not a word for me, you know, either, but uh, you'd have to give us a letter that you agree to a thirty or sixty-day uh, continuance, cause your hundred days is gonna run out.
So, so I think that's addressed the sketch to address your concerns, that doesn't address your concerns. So I wanna keep coming back to this to try and see if we can come to a meeting of the minds.
The answer, the very first question I asked her in the great hall, when he, when he was up there with the thing, is I haven't, I haven't gotten a significant answer. And she actually said exactly what I was thinking from the very first meeting in her letter, which is that the, that the the size of the lot and the type of the business does not constitute hardship. And I I haven't heard anything that makes, and I'm, and I've voted yes ten million times on this board, I don't know. And I don't know how to get there, and I don't, and that's just me. I don't know how anybody else feels, but-
So, so the 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 fact that the parking ratio for this type of use-
Is based solely on square foot of the building.
Yes.
Nothing else.
You're absolutely right.
Not what goes in it, not what it looks like.
But, but you're applying a retail, generic retail parking ratio. And we've provided evidence that that is far more than what's actually required based on the use. That in itself-
Yep.
That, and that's what we're requesting. So that that in itself, and again, the town of Halifax has one parking requirement, a one per one hundred for retail and a number of other uses. The Institute of Transportation Engineers has thirty-one different parking ratios for retail-type businesses. Thirty-one different types of retail uses have different parking ratios. That's how, that's how unique some of these models are.
I understand, yeah.
And 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 again, a general retail store that's seventy-two hundred square feet likely has five hundred to seven hundred and fifty square feet of back of house and everything else is retail floor area. You look at, you know, a a phone store, things like that, it's all front of house retail area. This is a unique building, it's a unique use. Only less than, you know, forty percent of the building area is actually retail area.
So let me ask you a question, unless I'm missing something. Under three conditions, bottom of page one.
You have to need them all. You have to-
Okay, well, number one, owing to the circumstances related to soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures. And especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. Well, what does she mean by structures?
Where are you, where are you looking at here?
Number one, on bottom, oh, you don't have it.
I'm reading.
Okay.
You have to find, one, that owing the circumstances, soil conditions, blah blah blah, which is what we're talking about, which I still don't think exists. They're, they're trying to help, but I don't think they are restricted enough for anything. Two, a little enforcement of the provision-
Well, what does, what does or structures mean, and number one?
The structure.
Topography of such land or structures, so it's the topography of the land, so something about the land doesn't allow them to use it, but everybody else can use the land. It's out of the vote, it's seen now. Two, it would involve substantial hardship if we didn't give them this variance. And I I hate going back and forth like this, but it's, it's literally the only thing I'd ask the whole time, and I don't, I don't know how you would get there, I don't. And you would on, on a bigger piece of land anywhere in town, and I wish that was the case, like a, a, you know. It's, it's the same thing that people have come up and asked for for variances on on everything, and it's, and they, you have a good reason. But it's, what your argument to to me is that your definition of what the parking needs are for your building are different than the town of Halifax, but I, we have to go by what the town of Halifax tells us.
But that's, but that's what this board is empowered to do, is to weigh, is to weigh the the municipal requirements.
But you're saying it's based on your type of business. You, you could put any type of business in a building half the size and be perfectly fine.
But we're not proposing any type of business. We're proposing an auto parts retail store. And we've provided sufficient evidence to support that an auto parts retail store does not have the same parking requirement of one per one hundred square feet as all the other general retail stores. And that's, and that's even reinforced by the the Board of Health granting a variance from their requirements for the same exact type of request.
Can we say that that's also happened for in in Halifax itself with Allied Auto? It used to be at the end of Indian Path and Plymouth Street? That most of their building was used as storage and warehousing? And their, their whole retail area was maybe just a room.
When you take this building that they proposed and put it in Tedeschi's parking lot, Tedeschi's lot, would that fit?
I don't know. And that's, I asked that the first meeting too, I go, where else in town does this exist?
I mean, you take, you take, it's right across the street.
Yeah.
You take that building, put it right across the street, would that fit?
Yes, you can see, they're roughly the same size.
Same size. But that, that piece of property has wetlands on it. That, that creates-
But I don't know how big that, how big is that lot, is the same?
It's a one acre lot.
I can just tell you that one acre.
One acre lot.
It has to be at least a thousand square feet.
They probably put the gas pumps in.
There was a triple stack, it was Dr. Dolan's, Tedeschi and the gas-
And gas pumps.
They wouldn't, we wouldn't allow it. But you take that building, that they proposed and put it across the street, it'd be no problem with it. Because it's, it doesn't have any, it doesn't have any wetlands. That piece of property has wetlands. What is the difference in it?
But is it stopping them from building that?
They were, they were trying to put a gas station on Tedeschi's lot a couple of years ago.
They were trying to put a gas station to one on this lot.
They tried, yeah, cause Stop and Shop tried to buy-
The Stop and Shop, yeah.
Oh, they went through a field facility?
Yeah, yeah.
You, you do have a couple properties on, in this area that are well underparked. And I'm not sure how-
Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms, obviously, I get it, Cumberland Farms, big, big wave here, you know, um, they're definitely underparked for their, um, for their zone. And this property right here, which looks fairly new, is drastically underparked. And I'm not sure how that passed, and the property line follows the limit of the pavement. So the seventy-five percent or the forty percent of landscaping, I don't know how that got through either.
Well, that's not retail, not all retail.
Oh, it's, it's worse, it's restaurant, right? That's a higher, that's a higher demand.
At one, the others are offices and-
Cause at restaurants, people sit inside and eat. At a retail store, you know what you're gonna get, like, for a round.
But it's still, it's only the same, the same stipulations, you're right, I agree with you.
So I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what happened there. If if anybody even went to ZVA at the time to, you know, and maybe they just bypassed you guys overall, I'm not sure, but I mean, obviously that's not our intent to, um.
Let's not step over him. Shoot. If we want to take a five-minute break, we can do that too, stick, I have to hit a minute or two. We'll just take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we?
I don't know.
It's not just-
I'm that guy today.
Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we, uh, excuse me? Do you wanna vote on this? Do, I gotta, I shouldn't put that in my mouth. Okay.
And what would you like to see?
You wanna vote on it?
Do they want an extension so they can show?
What would you like to see?
Me? I would like to see, what I, what I talked about, what, I would like to see if this lot can fit that, that type of business meeting all bylaws, meeting all the density requirements and everything. And then, you know, also come with a plan that you would want to, uh, like I say, I would, I would go down to one variance. I would go down to the number of parking spaces and I would get rid of the other two. But I would like to see, cause in my mind, it would satisfy our ability to grant a variance in this case. Now, what we're doing on is another situation, but right now, if we were gonna vote on it right now, I'd have to say no, because I haven't been shown that yet. So I would like to see an extension and that shown.
Is this our third hearing?
Yes.
Why is this just now coming up?
Because we just got the opinion from the attorney.
Oh, yeah, it was the first question I asked.
Okay, yeah.
What's the hardship? That's, and that's what we're trying to figure out.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
And and like, the lawyer says exactly what I asked in the very beginning. She said, you're gonna meet these three things? Doesn't look like you-
We haven't seen that, we haven't seen that, we've been able to see this as like our business.
And and cause they've told us that this is their business model and they can't, that's, I'm just, this is how I'm getting, this is how I'm getting it, right, right, right.
And I hear you, I hear you, but I mean, she, she, it, and it's state law, you have to meet these three things. And any one of those three things is fatal, it's, it's-
Yeah.
Well, it's fatal, it's fatal, it's-
Well, it's fatal, it's fatal, it's fatal on appeal. It's fatal on appeal. It's fatal if there's opposition. It's fatal on appeal.
Correct.
This is the appeal.
This is the, no, no, no.
Nobody appeals that decision.
If this, if this board grants a variance and there's opposition that then appeals that variance, then it goes to a judge and the judge decides.
The judge says, we never should have issued it, doesn't it?
You're, you're right, it would. The third public hearing for this application, there hasn't been one member of the public to speak in opposition for this application.
So we've had concerns though.
No, we've had, we've had concerns from a, from a direct of butter who wants to see, who wants to see this, this property cleaned up because in its current condition it's causing undue hardship and flooding to her property. Our proposal fixes that problem. It addresses her issue, which is why she's been dedicated and been at all these meetings, and we absolutely love her for it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way for the board to allow, to take a vote to allow the applicant to speak directly with the land use attorney?
Because I've, like, my attorney will be able to speak to her directly. We'll cover the cost for whatever fees she fines us for. Yeah. That's no problem.
Yeah, and, and to share the opinion too.
I have no idea what you are talking about because I'll keep reading from the.
I don't know why they couldn't, you know, once she's.
We've discussed.
This is a matter of public care.
We have given this.
That wasn't published before, that's why we didn't share.
Yeah, I called you, I did call her to try and talk to her, and she said she needed approval from you guys to speak to us or to share her opinion, to share that.
Is that okay with the selectmen?
I can't speak for the selectmen as a.
Well, I've asked Charlie in the past, and once you've spoken about something in public record, it's public record. But we can give him his opinion.
I think if you read the whole letter, it becomes public record at that point in time. I would not like to see the board vote on something that they think is wrong and would be overturned over. I, I don't think, that's not good policy for the town. I understand.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to, I was just.
Yeah, I just don't think that's good policy for the town for the people to have to do that. But I think it would make sense if the board is comfortable sharing that opinion, at least then your attorneys could review it.
Right. And at least provide a counterstatement to what you're saying.
And then ask for the ability for them to talk together because I think the land use attorney knows what the concerns of the board are.
Right.
So if there's something where they could work out.
Because I, I need to know if we need to walk away. Tell O'Reilly to not even worry about it and walk away, and I just take a loss or if we need to move forward. Right now, I really ran up the bill on, on my, my end, you know. And really frustrating the tenant in general. And I have thirty stores I'm doing right now with the tenant. I don't wanna.
Sour there for the.
It's like, yeah, it's like, they're very sour about this particular deal because I've done, like I said, I've seriously done thirty deals in the past twelve months with them. And I may have said more than.
So what type of business would require a variance? If there's a nexus between the property and the business, what's, what type of business could you foresee we would need to grant a variance for?
I don't think that, I'm gonna be honest with you Dan, I don't think that has anything to do with. I, I think she's, she says it in the beginning. She says you need to have three things. It's, it's, it's case law that's everywhere. You gotta have topography or some sort of issue with the, the land. You have to have an issue that would cause substantial financial hardship or, or otherwise, and the relief would not derogate from the intent of the bylaw. I don't know if we have any of this.
Well, but, but the, again, the intent of the bylaw is to provide sufficient parking for specific uses. And we've demonstrated that the, the number of parking spaces we're providing does, it does comply with the intent of the regulation because you wanna provide enough parking that meets the needs of the business that's being proposed. Building and C of Parking doesn't do anyone any good. It doesn't benefit anybody.
It's saying the type of business is not sufficient. It doesn't say the type of business is not.
A consideration.
Is not a consideration.
I'm talking about further up in her letter, she talks about in case law, that is, the three things you have to have if you grant a variance.
Right, and I'm talking about the whole letter where at the end she says, her opinion is, is, um, the, the, the type of business is a consideration. Is there, is there connotation here? Of course she does. She says, in my opinion, hardship based on the type of business is not sufficient to grant a parking variance. To further on, it says there must be a nexus between the property and the type of business.
She previously says that hardship based on a type of business is not sufficient.
Alone. I would say it's not sufficient alone.
Right.
So I think they've, I, I think if they can show what I'm asking for, that, that they've done what they need to do.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know how.
Right.
If we don't, then what happens? If we're not able to show that, then what happens?
If they deny, if they deny the variance, the project, we don't have approval.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to even consider a variance, in my opinion.
In my, so, and that's just off that letter. So, so you could have just miswritten it or something, or we don't even know what you're talking about. That's the problem.
Well, we can, I think we can provide.
My attorneys have reviewed it, kind of, and they said, yeah, you're able to.
But it's also based on the requirements that every state zoning board of appeals requires for a variance in any town of three hundred and fifty-one towns in Massachusetts. That's been the basis of every variance we've ever granted since I've been on this board. So it's not just her opinion that's doing that. It's every single time we grant a variance, we have to look at these three things. And she talks about if somebody, if somebody has a variance from fifty feet off the front to forty-two feet, we have to find what that, what that would do. And if it's ripping down, a lot of times it's ripping down a whole house, ripping down a deck or something like that, that's hardship, and we do that. And that's, and that's, that's what she's getting at, is that, and it was the first question I asked, which is, I'm not, I'm just not sure what the hardship is here because it seems to be based on the size of the building that you guys don't wanna change. And I know you keep saying that, but it's because of the parking spots that need to be tied to the square footage of the building.
It's the ratio that exists in the case.
I think the territory is the point. I mean, I'm doing twenty-five, twenty-six parking spots in Rockland right now.
Rockland's a very different town than Halifax.
I understand. I'm also, I mean, like, but, and we had to get variance for reduction in the parking spots there. But this situation, it's one per a hundred square feet.
Seventy-three parking spaces for an O'Reilly's, yeah.
Yes. And just think about that. Do you just want like a asphalt paradise?
I'm with, I'm with you, and I get that.
Working to reduce that.
We agree with everything that you've said. We agree with everything that you've done. I think you're changing the, all of the stuff that you do for the water retention over there, or changing the problem, I think is fantastic. I really do. I just, we just need a little, I mean, I'm on, I'd vote for you right away. That's, that's just my, my opinion. I think it's great. I think everything you're doing is perfect.
So if there was a specific use for auto parts stores or if there is a more detailed use of retail use, anything else carried?
The ballot is different. We wouldn't be here. Like, yeah.
So what's the process for changing that?
Well, that's, that's.
That's always a good chat. That's even harder than good. That's out of the list, yeah.
I disagree at this point. I think, I think our arguments are, I think our arguments are completely valid and they can stand up to, to any type of discretion or, or, or contestment. We have to have a regulation, a zoning regu, a modification of the zoning regulations that establish something different. We go back to the planning board. The planning board received this project very favorably. You know, we had issues that we had to work through with them, but we have approval from the, from the planning board. So, um, and, you know, I think we've had support from, from community numbers and, and, you know, it's been, we're here now. And I think we provided sufficient evidence to, to give you guys what you need, but there are still some things that we can't quite get past. So I think, you know, I think we'd like, we'd like, you know, I'd love to say we can get there tonight, but I'm just not sure. You know, I, I think, I think I have a flavor of some, but I'm not sure exactly what the rest of the board members are saying. But it seems as if we need to maybe do a little more.
The burden of proof is on you and we need to see that you satisfy what our attorney says are the requirements to show. We've been saying it all night.
Yeah.
Um, hardships, which is gonna be, we could do it if we didn't have to.
Yeah, and, and I think the fact that the.
So you need to, you need to have an extension. That's what you need to do.
And then we need, we need, we need this board to grant us the ability to read her letter and.
So what my first thought was.
And, and talk, speak with her.
Yeah, my first thought was do a conditional use, so do strictly an auto parts store, continue here. If we have to change the use in any way, and only like a certain amount of the floor space can be used as retail. And then if the use is changed in any way, then we have to come back for approval for whatever that exists. Because it is a specific use. It's different.
Yeah, that's what we requested.
That's what I thought this attorney would come back.
And the courts would become.
But I hadn't seen anything.
If there was any type of substantial change.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if there's a substantial change between the retail space and.
Like the actual.
And that's what we discussed with the building official at the last hearing, because he was here. And we talked about that same, that same interpretation and how that could be applied. And I think he was generally in, in support of what we had been proposing. And, and again, the Board of Health granted a variance as well.
All right, let's do this. Looking for a motion that would enter into the, into the account of the letter from our, our town council. Amy Kessbo regarding her legal opinion to petition number. Eight, eight-nine-four. And then we, rather than, I'm not gonna sit here and read this.
I think we've made it public, public knowledge right now.
Yeah, and we'll just enter it into the, into the minutes as presented. We'll forward a copy to the applicant and request a, an extension so that legal departments can confer with one another.
Thank you.
And, and then put you on the agenda for, for next month. What do you guys think about that?
I was gonna ask, is there any, do you guys do special hearings? Some towns do that way, like, we could do this in the next two weeks? I know it's, I know you're the board members here. It was with the shot.
This is a volunteer thing.
No, I get, that's it, yeah, I get, I get.
At this point, so.
It's, it's the Monday after the Fourth of July, so good luck. You guys all being in good mood, right?
Oh, I'm on vacation. That's all you.
You thought you were on vacation.
Oh, I'll give my wife your number then.
Yeah, okay. There'll be some lady sitting in my driveway in the morning.
With three young kids, yeah. What are we gonna do next?
Well, what would you gentlemen think of that? Or we can, or we can make a motion and vote on this tonight, if you'd like to do that also.
I think I'll have to see it, go through an extension till next meeting.
And see what they come up with and what they propose. No, it could be done, but what their, what their variance, what their final.
Jerry, what do you think, Liz? You wanna vote on it tonight?
No, I think, I'm hoping that the, the two lawyers will get together. The right stuff that comes back to us and say, this is okay to do.
They can find a spot. I'm like.
Are you, are you looking for it?
No, listen, I've said the whole, I've said two things the whole time. I swear to God, I haven't come off of this argument. The first one is I have no idea what the hardship is because I don't think it exists. But the second piece is if this is on a normal piece of property in town, with all the requirements, I'm not against that at all. I want it to happen. I just, like, I, I, I just don't, I don't see how it works. And it sounds like she doesn't see how it works, but if they can find a way to make it work, I'm cool with it.
We're looking for the same thing. Can we do it?
She was probably looking for us to have her get with our attorney.
Those are two lawyers talking to each other.
And every time she's come out and said she's been rational, reasonable, and correct.
I don't think the selectmen have had problems with that in the, you know, in the past, once it's become a matter of public record. Yeah.
I think you read it, so I think it's public.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, what, how do you get her to one of these meetings? Because I was at the first one. I did see her there for, for something else. How, how do we go about doing that, or getting her here?
To attend.
To attend.
Well, I think if she just does our turn.
Right, yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, she hasn't accepted any calls since I.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
All right, so we, we'll move on to the next.
I make a motion that we ask for, we have the applicant as one extension.
Okay.
And then the attorneys confer. And what else? Continue the hearing till, continue it till the next month?
Yeah, that's what it said.
Till the next meeting, of petition.
Eight-nine-four.
Eight, eight-nine-four. Petition eight-nine-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll ask for voice vote. Aunt Casaya?
Yes.
Unless, I mean, they're gonna be waiting. Unless they wanna move, if they wanna extend it sixty days.
I don't think, I, I don't think there's, I think we're running up to the charge decision.
That would all be contingent upon.
Yeah, right, you guys, you guys have to ask for the extension.
Extended till the next meeting, but.
It's now we get voted on tonight.
We're just gonna vote on, on seeing if that's what the board wants to do. Jerry?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that passes. So now it's.
It falls back in our court.
Okay.
I saw that.
In which case, the, the letter itself will be entered into the minutes. They'll leave here tonight with a copy of that.
Thank you.
And then, uh... And then the attorneys can, can talk to each other, in which case we'll.
Does me have to submit it in writing?
The extension does have to be.
We'll send a letter to.
Oh, wow.
She good at what, huh?
Oh, wow, look at that.
I think she knew it was coming.
Yes, she did too opposite.
If she's that good, we're gonna throw them on our end. I'm just gonna do this.
It's two to one. The bros are losing, so you can't.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to figure out what the.
All right, and we'll do that. All right, gentlemen? We should be all set.
Got her some fantastic volunteers.
I'll go through.
Don't talk too loud. We have speakers in the car. There's air vents.
All right, gentlemen, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.